We will call the meeting to order. For this, we'll just stand for the Pledge Allegiance. That's okay with you. Legs will run that down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would like to thank you all for attending. Few items on the agenda. First item will be approval of the minutes from the December 6th meeting. I think you were all emailed those. Unless you see any problems or issues, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I will make that motion to approve.
Stay a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Item two, conditional use approval. I'll turn the meeting over to Andy.
All right, first of all, I would like to welcome Bob Carter and Jack Short to the planning commission. This is their first meeting. And with regret, Mayor, former Mayor Doug Johnson has resigned, so we will need to get his position filled, which we'll work out candidates for that. Moving on to the agenda item, conditional use approval. Then we have a site development plan review and a variance. All these are for City Switch for a wireless communication tower located East Perry Street along the railroad tracks there. At this time, I am going to turn it over to John to give a brief overview.
Dear gentlemen, my name is John Sandella representing City Switch Towers. My address is 5546 Pearl Road, Parma, Ohio, 44129, just a little suburb outside of Cleveland. The proposal before you today would be to locate a 190-foot tall wireless telecommunications facility in a I-2 industrial manufacturing district for stopping East Perry Street. Andy, if you could go to the next page, can I get a bird's eye view? There you go. So you can see East Perry Street, railroad north and south, railroad extension going diagonal. So this is an I-2 district. As you can see, just so you know, the code requires that we would be permitted use if we were two times the height of the tower from the nearest residential district. Well, the way that the railroad is positioned and this residential district, right here, we are 320 feet change. So because of 60 feet, that's why we're here today. Otherwise, we would receive the permit from Andy already. But as you can see from this perspective, there are no residential districts in the area, just on the other side of our manufacturing. We're over 530 feet away from this residential district here, so we need to set back to that. And the rest of this is all undeveloped property. Andy, if you could go to the next slide, kind of give them a general closer review. Keep going. Oh, yeah, keep going. So there's a view of the actual property itself. What we have here is our cell tower, eight-foot board-on-board fence, over 40 evergreen trees screening in it from basically nothing, because you can't see it from any residential district. Access road directed to Perry. This tower will be utilized for AT&amp;T and as well as for Norfolk Southern Railroad. AT&amp;T will have improved coverage, both for its five U capabilities to the city of Bryan, but also AT&amp;T has a national contract with the United States government called FirstNet, if you may have heard of that. That's a national network, first ever one dedicated solely to emergency first responders, case of a catastrophic event, anything like that. And so all of their sites are being switched over so that not only do they serve AT&amp;T customers, but also FirstNet. And so this site will be, be able to be compatible with both of those technologies, I guess you'd say. Andy, if you could go another one, there's another, here you go. So you can see wood fence, evergreen trees, AT&amp;T, Norfolk Southern, and then it's designed for three other carriers, whether that may be T-Mobile, Verizon, Dish Network, City Bryan, anybody else who might use the tower. And then, Andy, if you could go to one more, I think it would give you the, yeah, here you go. So here's a tower, it's not the erective type of tower. It actually looks like one solid piece of metal, but it's three sections, called a monopole. AT&amp;T's at the top, you can see Norfolk Southern antennas here, there's one here at 60 feet across the middle, and then one on the top as well. Not only is this tower designed for AT&amp;T, but also Norfolk Southern to improve their communications, so train-to-train communications, train to, train to guys in the ground, and also positive train control antennas, which would potentially stop a train in a runaway situation. So that's a general overview of the project. I'd like to give you the view of the coverage that would result from this particular site. There you go. If we could go to, this is the current site that we are proposing, red's good, blue's bad. So as you can see, Bryan, from north is a site directly on the, you know, about an angle, the main, main route going up to the turnpike, and then south, a site's on either side of the city. And you can see red is good, where you can penetrate any signal in any type of building you have, and you walk into your van, you won't drop the call. When you want to work out of your house, you can work wirelessly, so on and so forth. Your policeman environment, use AT&amp;T radios, obviously they'll have tremendous coverage. Andy, if you could go to the lead, one below. So currently, AT&amp;T is located on an SBA tower, which is almost more than a quarter mile to the south. It's also an industrial district, by the way. And so when you compare the coverage from the current site it has on this, and you flip it over to Andy to the next one, you can see, actually, go down, you go down, yes, scroll down a little bit.
That's the last.
I mean, I mean up, I'm sorry. Here you go. So you go right here, see this area here? Right now, you got average coverage here with the current site. This is directed from AT&amp;T's radio frequency engineers. So you can see this whole average area, basically that's downtown Bryan, I believe, and also connecting the site to the north. So then when you scroll up, Andy, you can see this area now, yellow, turns to red, orange, all these three colors, which are good, best, above average, above average. And so essentially, by moving this site a quarter mile to the north, all the AT&amp;T customers in the area receive better coverage from their provider, not only to work at home, emergency services, whatever calls they must make, you know, on a day-to-day basis, but also, because this is a FirstNet site, would also allow, provide better coverage for first responders, emergency services, whoever uses those, that particular band that's essentially being rolled out around the country. I do have a letter, and I guess it was part of the code regarding admissions of the site. So just like AT&amp;T, but also T-Mobile, Verizon, Dish Network, they're all governed by the FCC in terms of their communications, also the amount of power they can use, the regulations all through that. And so the code requires that we have to certify that this site would be operating within their general parameters at every site that AT&amp;T has in the country, governed by the FCC. That's signed by John Kovach, who is the lead RF engineer for the northern half state of Ohio. And you can see that that complies with the code. If it's a requirement of the board that you'd like us to test the site after, should your approval goes on air, to confirm these reports, it's not a problem. Essentially, AT&amp;T is more afraid of FCC by exceeding those requirements than anything you guys could do to them. So, but that could be a condition of your, hopefully, approval as well. That's all I really have, is a general aspect of the project. As you know, we're already on the SBA tower to the south. We want to move to the north to provide better coverage to our customers. First and foremost, Norfolk Southern can utilize this tower as well for its train-to-train communications. Unfortunately, Norfolk Southern, as well as CSX, Amtrak, Union Pacific, all the railroads that have their own communication systems, which they do, they only locate their antennas on towers on their property. Because it's a safety issue, they need to ensure that should, you know, 20 years in the future, 30 years, whatever the case may be, they need to know that the antennas are going to be working now, but also in the future, because it's on their property. They own it, the tower's on their property, there's no issues with changing title or moving a tower from one property to another. So Norfolk Southern antennas can only be located on property that it owns, or has a relationship with another railroad, whether it's CSX or Amtrak. So that's all I really have, is a general aspect of the project. Now, if you guys have any questions?
So currently, the railroad does not have communication on the present tower?
No, it does not.
They do not?
No.
Who has communications on the present tower?
The present tower?
In addition to AT&amp;T.
Yeah, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Verizon around the current tower. That's just over a quarter mile to the south. Almost, it's almost 1,600 feet, I believe.
And they're staying there?
So far, I only represent AT&amp;T, so I can't, I can't predict what
That was going to be, I guess, the next question?
What they would do.
Who actually owns the tower?
Who owns the tower?
Yeah. You guys, I mean, you just established something where you
Yeah, City Switch would own the tower in this location. Yeah. So just like SBA or America Tower or Crown Castle Towers, there are tower companies all over the country that operate towers, build them, erect them, and then rent them out to other carriers.
And the other tower is not your tower?
Correct. Absolutely. AT&amp;T came to City Switch, said, hey, we want to improve coverage here in this area. We have issues with what's, what's, what's happening on the SBA tower, so they wanted to move this location. And they came to us, and since we have the relationship with the railroads, City Switch has one of the few national agreements with all the major railroads in the United States. That's how City Switch came to be in this situation.
According to the correspondence that was submitted, it appears that this is a substantial financial advantage for you folks to have your, another tower.
For AT&amp;T?
Yes.
Correct. So, so I didn't want to get into that, and so this, here, this gentleman here is representing SBA Towers, going to tell you about this. So every carrier has master lease agreements with every tower company. So AT&amp;T has agreements with 10 different tower companies around the country, so does Verizon and T-Mobile and Sprint and all those companies. And so over time, as you want to upgrade your site, you file an application, or whatever you need, whatever your agreement says with the tower owner, and then you can swap out antennas, you know, improve technology, whatever the case may be, you know, add FirstNet antennas, you know, for first responders. And so all the affidavit that I submitted to you, all of the tower companies around the country have agreed to work with AT&amp;T to renegotiate or to allow to lessen the financial burden of having to install all these antennas for all these separate purposes which they require, mainly FirstNet. And one company that has not chosen to renegotiate or to lessen their financial burden is SBA. So the affidavit I submitted to you was from the executive vice president of AT&amp;T for the United States of America, laid out exactly what's happening, what's going on. They've been working with SBA for a long time. I can't speak to the negotiations, but essentially, a deal couldn't be made. And so AT&amp;T said, hey, we need to provide these services to our customers, and for the FirstNet program, the first responders, so I need to find a solution that doesn't involve doing anything with the current tower they're on. So we found this location in a, in an industrial district, which your code allows, if we were 60 feet away, we would, we would have filed for a building permit. Unfortunately, the way the property is configured, that 60 feet is the problematic issue. And so AT&amp;T basically had no choice. So that's why we're here today. So, and actually, because of the coverage grid issues, you can see that we're actually improving coverage to the city of Bryan by moving to the north, as well as providing access for Norfolk Southern to provide their safety antennas as well.
I'm going to assume that they chose that location because they, they identified that that's probably the best place for coverage city-wise.
Moving north, correct?
And not going like completely north on the other side of the
Right. Absolutely. As you notice, if you go back to the coverage grids I sent you, there's already sites to the north of the city.
Yeah.
So essentially, what he's trying to do, they're trying to sandwich Bryan in between the two best possible sites they can. And that's, that's where this comes from. So it's, you know, under the Telecommunications Act of 1996, AT&amp;T, as well as Verizon and T-Mobile, they're mandated to provide as best as possible, continuous, and uninterrupted coverage to its customers. And when they can improve that coverage, they have to, for obvious reasons, because people rely on that every day now. There's no more phones on the wall in your house, at least not in mine, but, you know, everybody carries a phone with them, 911 purposes, working out of their homes now with wireless capabilities. We learned that through the pandemic. You know, it's a, it's a much greater issue than it used to be. And that's why you see all these 5G commercials on TV being rolled out, because whereas 5G is great, the frequencies and all the services it provides to all of you, unfortunately, where under 4G, the coverage used to be this far from the center of a site, now in 5G, it's this much. So it provides, you know, you can download a movie in two seconds if you talk to my son, he's on Twitter all day downloading movies. And so he could do it a lot quicker than he used to, but there's more holes in coverage now. And so this site would provide, bridge the gap, I guess, between this site and then the new, the site that's north of the city, to the benefit of the residents of the city of Bryan.
How many other cities has AT&amp;T wanted to do this type of situation?
It's all over the country. I handle AT&amp;T, I'm sorry, I represent City Switch for Ohio and Michigan, is my two states, basically. I've done 35, 45 sites of these, that I've been in zoning areas for this type of relocation project. But it's all, it's a national project. There's thousands of sites that AT&amp;T is, is doing this for this reason, due to the SBA situation. It's a national program. Any questions, or?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I'm sure there'll be something else I can come back up.
Okay. Before I ask anybody else, Andy, I don't have my codebook handy here, but he's, we're asking for a conditional use on this. Now, is this truly conditional use in this area, or is it because of the distancing? I mean, does the table say allowable in an I-2?
Yes.
Okay, it is allowable.
The conditional use is because, like John said, it doesn't meet the distance requirement for the nearest residential district.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So it needs to be twice the height of the tower away from a residential district, and like John said, it falls 60 feet short of meeting that requirement. So therefore, it has to go through the conditional use process.
Okay. And then item three, the variance, it is stated in our code in the section, it must be a half mile away from another existing tower.
Yes. Let me find that section.
I remember reading it, I just apologize, I didn't bring my book with me today.
Yes, section 05CC.
Yep.
I know that we're there yet, but you have not seen any issues with the site and development plan for that?
No, as far as the site development plan, no. We looked at it through our office, and I didn't see, I mean, there's no stormwater retention on there, but it's all stone anyway, so they're not making anything impervious. So, you know, the drains should go where it used to go. So as far as site development plan review, our office had no issues with that.
Yeah, this site is secluded next to the railroad track there. The evergreens and the fence, closer than I would like on the east side, but like I said, this, this is a secluded site. The old metal mannequins there, if you guys are familiar, that site is in poor condition.
Yeah, I think it's going to look better along with some
Correct. Okay, is there anyone from the crowd there that wants to speak? Sir, all right, step on up and state your name, if you would, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Detroit. I'm with law firm Dinsmore &amp; Scholl out of Annover, Michigan. I also am licensed here in Ohio and do my fair share of zoning down here, so it's the first time I've actually been back to Ohio since I moved to Michigan, so
Gotcha.
It's nice to be back. And thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak here today.
Sure.
I think it was alluded earlier, I represent the owner of the existing tower that AT&amp;T leases on SBA Communications. And as you'll hear me discuss, SBA does oppose this project for a number of reasons. Before I get into my presentation, I did want to respond to a few of the questions that came up before. One had to do with the, the cell coverage that is existing and is proposed to be in place with the new tower. I am not an engineer, I'm not even going to try. We did submit, by, I mean SBA, we did submit our own coverage maps, where we did an analysis across the, the relevant radio frequency bands, yeah, thank you, I think there are 12 of them, and it compares what that coverage would be like between the proposed tower and where AT&amp;T sits now and the existing tower. And there is also a summary sheet attached to that, finding that it would essentially be duplicative of the existing coverage. So I'm, I'm not in a position to challenge the statements by my colleague about the improvements, but since that was a highlighted part of his presentation, I think at a minimum, what we see here is a prototypical, you know, battle of experts. So to the extent that there's any ambiguity between what, what our experts are saying and their experts are saying as far as coverage, if that's something that the board wants to consider, I would encourage a continuance, a tabling of this hearing, so that we can, each of us, if we choose to, can bring our own experts who can give you their feedback. Or, if you want, you can certainly, the code allows you to retain your own expert in this field, and I'm sure we could recommend some truly independent experts that could come and give you an analysis of the covers that you can rely on. So that's an option, too. The other thing I would like to say is, is my colleague made several references to the fact that, but for the fact that we weren't 60 feet closer, we would be going for building permits. Well, that's not entirely true. You still would have to get your variance, because as, as we talked about at the very end of this presentation, this is well within a half mile of our existing site. So there are real questions about co-location and the proliferation of towers. And I think it's worth noting, and I will say, I was very impressed, by the way, with your code. I've done, my colleague has, we've done a fair amount of these for cell towers in multiple states, I-2 in Michigan and Ohio, and you guys have a pretty extensive telecommunications chapter in your code. That's pretty remarkable. And I'll just note that one of the goals under the first subsection 01, intent to promote the co-location of wireless telecommunications facilities in order to decrease the number of towers in the city. And that is what we have here, a tower proposed to be put right smack in the middle of the city and within, almost within, well, no, within a half mile, just slightly beyond a quarter mile from an existing tower. There, literally, you could see both of them at the same time. So I wanted to point out both the conditional use and the variance issues, because I didn't hear that mentioned at all. And as, as I know, since you have listened to conditional use hearings in, maybe not in this context, but in all other contexts, the applicant needs to demonstrate that it meets the requirements for conditional use. It can't just breeze over that. Those are requirements that have to be set forth. Same is true with the variance, even more so in the case of the variance. In Ohio, a variance standard is pretty high. You can't just say, we want it, and then you get it. You've got to meet certain burdens. And I didn't hear any evidence about those burdens, so I want to talk to them about those briefly, if I could. Section 116905, standards applicable for conditional use applications. Okay. One, A1, a technically suitable location does not exist in any area set forth in subsection 116903, and it talks about co-location and locations where towers are appropriate. The applicant shall provide documentation that supports the applicant's claim that no such technically... Oh, I'm very sorry, I thought I turned that off. I apologize for that. The applicant shall provide documentation that supports the applicant's claim that no such technically suitable location exists. I didn't hear anything about any alternative locations that were investigated, why it had to be this site. I think that's pretty important. Subsection A2, if there is an existing tower, then the applicant must show that reasonable efforts have been made to request co-location. Well, they don't have to request co-location, they're already on the tower. And I understand that they have some concerns about the lease terms. And we, I can represent, I can represent, having just got off the phone on my way here, that SBA is more than willing to entertain any issues that AT&amp;T has with its location. It will make more space available, it will increase the size of its tower as far as is allowable under the law, if that's an issue. It will talk to them about rent. I have been told that SBA will consider matching any rent that City Switch is going to give them, as long as it's an apples-and-apples comparison, right? As long as the terms are similar. So to the extent that there's not an alternative already in its co-location now, where, by the way, it already has its FirstNet, because I believe the name of it, which it's saying it needs to have, and I agree, that's a very important service, it's for first responders, that's an important service that they provide, that's already on the SBA tower. They asked for it. It was provided in an amendment that was just sent into in the lease in 2020. So very recently, very recently, AT&amp;T re-upped its lease, and there were no negotiations, there were no request and negotiations about rent terms there. But if that is a sticking point, I, I don't know where the math comes out in their affidavit saying that there's some $2 million discrepancy. I, I would like to see how that math was, was reached, how those numbers came across. That's a huge amount of money. But SBA is willing to consider matching rent. And all that has happened is a negotiation, and then this, this city can avoid having another 200-foot tower right in the center of it.
Is the present tower the same height?
It's just shorter.
It's what the proposed
It's just shorter than the new tower.
I beg your pardon.
I think our, the current SBA tower, I think, is four feet shorter than what the new tower would be. Not including the lightning rod at the top.
I see.
Yeah, I don't think it can go any higher because of the bloodline protection.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, whether or not the FAA would come in to have any
Yeah, I'm sure they cannot go any top higher than 200.
Yeah, I, I, I think that Yeah, I, I, that, I think that's right. Is it? Okay, yep, and I, I've dealt with that issue too before, and those are very, those are very serious issues. Now, I know that we have in our tower, and if, if, uh, one of the documents that I submitted, uh, for the board's consideration, is a letter from our own, basically, the, the site manager for Ohio, a guy named Michael McNamara, who, in addition to testify, or in addition to stating that he has not been approached by AT&amp;T about rent terms, he did mention that there is some additional room that SBA tower could be increased in height, if that's a sticking point. I will also say, and I don't know the details, so, uh, I, I can certainly find out about this more if you'd like. There are currently Norfolk Southern antenna, uh, for its railroad network on some of SBA's towers. I don't know if those SBA towers are located in the railroad right-of-way, that may be true. As my colleague has suggested, that Norfolk Southern likes to own the property on which the tower sits, that may be true, but I can certainly find that out for you, but I know, certainly that, well, it's been communicated to me that those, those antenna currently sit on SBA towers. I've also been told that it, they could feasibly be located on the SBA tower, if that's a concern, because the SBA tower, um, I don't know if you have a map available, but it's already located very close to the railroad, the railroad right-of-way, so. But again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that what, what he said is wrong, uh, it may be that they require that as part of their, as part of their, their wireless communication.
So, there's the map of the two towers.
What's the distance between the two, again?
Uh, fourteen.
Fourteen fifty.
Around fourteen hundred feet.
Yeah, so I'm, when I, when I was speaking up, the distance from here, it looks straight to the right railroad, I've been told that's close enough for that, for whatever, the, the, I, I, I don't, I don't profess to have any knowledge about that, but those antenna have to provide that, so it's on the current tower.
Before I turn to the variance, I'd also like to just note one other section that's critical here, uh, this is eleven sixty-nine oh-eight, approval required. Prior to receiving approval for a new tower, and this is all the towers, this is not limited to those requiring conditional use, a variance, this is all towers. The applicant shall demonstrate to the city that such facility is needed to meet the reasonable service requirements of the applicant. This, and this is actually where I get, the, I mentioned to you, you could retain a consultant. This assessment shall include consideration of alternative sites and operational implications of such alternatives with respect to, but not limited to, height, opportunities for co-location, impact on residents and impact on service levels, the city may retain consultants to review the information, but the reasonable clause for such consultation being borne by the applicant. So you have an opportunity here, so when you look at those coverage maps, the RF coverage maps, that seem to tell different stories, you can figure that out, and I think it's worth doing. That's for the conditional use. But I'm sure most, if not all of you, have entertained variances of all sorts in this room, and there's a whole laundry list of criteria for you to consider under your code, whether to grant a variance or deny it. I, I never envy being in a position where I had to request a variance, they are not by design easy, because you're asking for an exception that no, no other neighbors get, right? It's gotta be special, you gotta have particular circumstances, here are just a few of the criteria that could apply in this case that you might wanna consider. Whether the property in question will yield a reasonable return, and whether there can be any beneficial use of the property without the variance, well, this property's already being used. It's already right-of-way for a railroad, it's not like it's a, a property sitting out there in the nowhere, um, waiting for somebody to buy it and use it. Whether the variance is substantial, and is the minimum necessary to make possible for reasonable use of land or structures, well, I hope that I've already given you some reason to believe that this may not be necessary. This may be completely duplicative, to have two towers, basically, total hands, right next to each other. Whether the essential character of the neighborhood would be substantially altered, whether adjoining properties, and this is the important part, this is where the nick coming close to residential neighborhoods comes in, would suffer substantial detriment as a result of the, as a result of the variance. I understand that this is an industrial zone, and that that is one of the most free zones in terms of what uses are permitted, but there are homes there. And whether the property, only purchased the property with knowledge of the zoning restrictions, well, in this case, what does that mean? That means when City Switch decided to put plans together for this, did they know what they were facing when they put it there? Well, yes, they did, they knew that they were gonna be within sixty feet of a residential neighborhood, that was gonna trigger conditional use, and they also knew that there was gonna be a variance in play, 'cause they were pretty close, just over a quarter mile away. My sole point here is just to, to bring to your attention that there are steps that haven't been met here, there is evidence that hasn't been presented here to demonstrate why City Switch is entitled to have this. And I think that's something the board should require them to do, it's what the code requires and what I think they, they should be required to do. And at a minimum, I think it's worth getting some, some experts out here to tell you, is this really, is, is the juicier really worth the squeeze? Because I think there's some real questions about whether it is, and that's all I have. I'm happy to take any questions.
Not knowing anything, as you indicated yourself, you are not an engineer.
Right.
However, do you know if there's any reasonable way, or could it, could the power on the existing tower be increased to increase the coverage of the, the present footprint?
The only thing I've heard from, from my communications with SBA, and I'd be interested to hear what my colleague says, is that the only way to improve coverage on a tower is to increase the height of the location of the antenna. I don't know if that's true or not.
Can't turn the power.
Yeah, it's not, it can't be amplified.
That, that is impossible.
Yeah.
I see.
There's certain vision requirements, as you turn the power up, divisions go up, and so, there are levels which are acceptable to FCC and all of here.
Okay, so it wouldn't be possible for for the other, uh, uh, tower operator to make application with FCC to increase.
No.
And that's due to the, to the airport, right?
The height.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I realize.
Yeah, I can't speak to the height issue, but you can't just turn the power up, you, whatever, the, the height, even, even on, if, on our site, on the City Switch tower. If they wanted to cover a greater area, you couldn't just turn the power up at a hundred ninety feet, it wouldn't work that way, it's not allowed to do that.
So moving a hundred, what, fourteen hundred feet, whatever it is, northwest.
Basically, it picks up the coverage.
We get out of the zone of worrying about the airport, is what you're saying?
Well, there's only a ten-foot difference in the proposal, correct? Like, from SBA to City Switch.
Yeah.
Yeah, the runway protection go, zone goes up at like a nine to one, I forget what it is off the side, so, you know, the runway runs southwesterly, so, obviously, the farther north and east to go, the higher up it would be allowed in that runway protection zone.
You know, as I'm listening to all this, I mean, to me, it seems like there's something deeper there than I'm actually was aware of when I walked in this room, right? And I, I guess it comes down to business, is what it seems like to me. You know, my question to you is, let's say this doesn't get approved, to you, actually. Because when I look at the coverage map, like, to me, I was like, this doesn't even make sense, to like, throw money at something, when I, I really didn't see the benefit in the coverage map, and that's the truth, that's what I saw from the get-go. What I do wanna know is, okay, you guys obviously have something going on that I'm not aware of, are you gonna want to still put a tower up somewhere else where you can actually get out of being within the half-mile that the code actually stipulates? So, you know, you can fight this, but, again, I think they're probably gonna, because it comes down to dollar bills, for some reason, that's what I'm reading. I still think they're probably gonna come back at us with another location where they know they can get away with it, and, and, you know, you're, you're probably not gonna stop this when it comes down to it in the end. So, I mean, if that's what this is about, I'd like to know, um, any idea, like, what this is really about, I don't think it's covered.
The, uh.
I mean, you wanting to get off their tower, to me, it doesn't seem like it's covered, I, I mean, I, I admit, I don't need a professional coming here, I can see it when I see what you presented to us. So, I mean, in the end, this is about something else to me, it's not coverage, that's what it true.
The coverage map looks similar.
Uh, very similar, I mean, I don't think it's worth putting the kind of money you guys are gonna be putting into it unless there was, number one, financial gain, you know, not renting something from somebody else, it's a situation, and, I mean, you know, if you're gonna spend that kinda money, I mean, I think it's actually about not paying rent to somebody else, is what it looks like to me. Now, who owns the new tower again, clearly, that's what.
AT&amp;T would be paying rent to either company.
Okay, so SBA still owns the tower?
The one that they're on, the one they're on.
Okay, I see.
AT&amp;T is still paying rent to us.
Okay.
They are, they're still paying rent, if you look at the affidavit, uh, SBA won't renegotiate, this is what, this is what the affidavit says from a, between the high-level negotiations, this is what was provided to me, that they won't negotiate with what AT&amp;T wants to, to do for their, for their site.
And, and I mean, again, you won't hike, you know, to get the coverage.
Ten extra feet, but also it's a half-mile closer, or quarter-mile closer to where the people are living, is what you're trying to cover, instead of covering cornfields, which is, understood, there's a, there's a necessity for that, but this is why this site came about.
You know, I, I think what I see is it's, it's, number one, it's close to the original spot, I mean, that's obviously was chosen because of coverage also, I'm sure, I'm sure. You know, I, you know, no matter what, and something's gonna probably happen anyway, somebody's gonna build a tower and get this done. You know, I, at first had reservations just because of the, the residential district close by, but, again, when this is all said and done, you know, I, I don't see a bunch of guy wires coming off the same, holding the tower in place, which, that gives it a nice clean look. I think it's gonna actually make the area look better than what it presently looks, it's always kinda looked, I mean, honestly, it's, it needs to be cleaned up, and I think it could look better, and this would do that. Presently, the water tower now, what's the height of that now, you know, like, hundred eighty-eight, hundred ninety feet? Any guys? One sixty-five, okay, so, you know, when I'm thinking residential, I'm, I'm looking out, and that's all I start to see is like, these skyscrapers in the air, but, I mean, they're already, I don't know what the distance is from the water tower there, I just don't think that, in the end, that would be something that would stop me from saying okay with the project, so. I just felt like there was something else going on, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, and I think the problem is, again, when you look at our code, we were very specific that we did not wanna litter the city limits with a bunch of towers, and so that's why that half-mile was filling. And to move it, point two-seven miles, you know, it, it does defeat the purpose of what the intent was when that code was passed. Is that something we need to look at? Possibly, and I think, personally, I, I would like for some follow-up and, and potential table, personally, I don't know how the rest of the board.
Well, yeah, I, I have some questions, I, unfortunately, our city attorney wasn't able to make it today, um, so, I do have a couple of questions that I need to ask him, and I was gonna recommend that when everybody was done speaking, that, you know, possibly we table these items until I can ask a few questions and then coordinate with everybody what my questions and answers were.
Well, I think it'd be important to, uh, possibly table it. Because we already heard from the representative here that if there is a price negotiation, they've agreed to meet any, any competitive price.
Well, and the hard burn I had from day one was, you know, they, we tried to stress co-location, and here we are, quarter-mile away, trying to put another tower up, they're already existing on a tower, so that was some hard burn I had, and was gonna ask the questions about that, and
I agree.
You know, I, I've heard a little of that, but, um, I mean, I also know the criteria for granting variances, we've had this before, you know, there's, there's hardship, there's, you know, several items in there that I'm not a hundred percent sure we're meeting all of those, and this is not really a gray area like some of the other variances that we approved, you know, this is a little bit different, so.
Let me think too, I know, chair, I'm sorry, since fire and BME and utility are here, do you guys have anything to speak up on?
Right, yeah, I was gonna ask around if anybody else had anything else to, to mention.
I don't, I didn't wanna rush it, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're fine, you're fine.
Well, I think the electric unit, uh, requests that the meters be brought outside the fence here, is to access to, to be, uh, moved at all.
Which I believe they were out.
Yeah, no, they showed them.
Inside the fence, they typically do, too.
So the, their, C, C, C one, you go to C one, yeah, right there, see it, and you're right, right, closer to your, your hand there, that's the meter side, right there.
Okay.
Okay.
Outside of the fence, each, uh, each customer will have to have our application for the spread out in the, you know, for the, it's, it has to be installed. Good book, as the other, as the other tower comes along, south. And we see any, uh, electric, uh, on the, sort of, on the floor?
No, yeah, we.
Which is probably in, in the building?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
Yep.
That's only two steps ahead.
Okay, Derek, did you have anything on behalf of Utilities Department? Okay, Assistant Chief, do you have any questions or comments?
That was the one thing Doug and I talked about was, you're just coming outside, that was, they're loading the fire, you get, you can access the power.
Right. Okay. Does anybody here from the board have any questions from anyone, or comments?
Can I just ask for a point of clarification, given my limited knowledge on cell service? What SBA have is that four G, and City Switch is proposing five G, I mean, is it really just the ten feet that is gonna?
It has nothing to do with the tower companies, it's just the carriers, each, each carrier's operating their sites to new technology. At times, you just, it doesn't travel as far as it does for previous technologies.
Okay.
So you need more sites over a smaller area.
So, the, the coverage map that we saw was actually four G coverage at the moment?
No, no, it's, it's, it's with them upgrading all the new antennas they're gonna put on.
Okay.
I, I, you guys mentioned about the tabling, I mean, if that's something that you guys wanted to do, in order to, uh, answer, have your questions answered, you know, I know, I wouldn't have no problem with that. Go a direction for my client, I'm sure, uh, my colleague on his side wouldn't either, he had suggested.
Typically, our city attorney's here, but, he was unable to make it today, so.
Understood.
It just might be simple to do that.
If that's something that you would wanna table, we can come back and with whatever question you have, or, uh, expert witnesses, wherever you'd like to sit.
Okay, well, that'd be my recommendation, but I don't know what the rest of you would like to do, I mean, if you think that's the case, I mean, okay, I guess I would entertain a motion.
I will.
Well, I do, I do have one question.
Sure.
It came up, and Mary had mentioned, looking at our ordinances, with going to five G and not be able to go as far as four G, do we need to look at changing our ordinance?
Yes.
With the half-mile?
We do.
Or, I mean.
Has nothing to do with this.
I'm asking both of you, I guess.
The reason is because I represent, not only do I represent City Switch, I represent T-Mobile, Verizon, America Tower, the biggest tower company in the world, Crown Castle, and all the carriers, because of five G technology, are put in sites a half, a, a quarter-mile apart, you know, three quarters of, I mean, not, quarter of a mile, so just a little less than half a mile apart. This is much more of a high-dense residential city, you know, in terms of, uh, they're putting small cells up everywhere, meaning that in the, in the right-aways, there's a reason for that. Because the coverage, the technology's there, it just doesn't travel, doesn't penetrate buildings as much as it did in the past. And, it's great, you know, in terms of what we talked about earlier, but in terms of the actual distance it travels, it just doesn't do that, and, and, any expert would tell you that.
So you're saying, if you put it north of town, then it's not gonna get the...
Well, you can see there's a coverage gap right in the center of Brian right now, you know.
Yeah, if it used to be a three-mile umbrella for the high signal, now it's two.
Right, you, just, just, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, instead of five-mile spacing, you need a tower of three-mile spacing now.
Imagine, technology gets better, and it just, it's more compact, 'cause you're, you're using more services in the past, you just make a phone call, that's all everybody did, not a big deal, but now, everything in your life is, is wireless.
Yeah, I mean, you still have coverage outside that, let's say, two-mile window, but it's, it goes down to four G, and your bandwidth gets smaller, and.
There you go, that's exactly the situation.
Understand.
John, I got one question.
Yeah?
Um, the railroad owns that property there, the spur going north and south, did they look at any other locations along that spur going north and south?
This location they gave to me.
Okay.
I knew about the sixty feet, I asked the question, and, this is, this is the location.
Okay.
Perhaps it'll be revisited in the past, after today, perhaps it'll be revisited to go farther north, uh, which would be better coverage for, you know, but, this, I'm only dealing with what, what I was given.
I mean, I don't know where your nearest tower is south of this current location that you're on there, and that would be something that I'd be interested in seeing.
that you're on there, and that would be something that I'd be interested in seeing, because I do realize, you go north, you're getting into overlaps of coverage on the north side. And that's why I did ask some of the questions I asked earlier, because I do, I mean, there's plenty of room if you go north on there, and of course, the railroad already owns all that property. But I mean, I think you might have laps in coverage on the south side, so I would like to see something like that, if you guys can present.
Would that be something, with your experts, to give me a list of questions? And if we come back, we'll have our expert, our, John Kovach may be here, answer all of your questions, much more detail than I can.
When I say you, I mean AT&amp;D.
Understood, understood.
When I say you, I mean AT&amp;D. In your opinion, do you think by them moving north, they were trying to get, their main intent was to get the downtown better coverage? Do you think?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
That's what I believe, you know, there's difference of opinion in coverage, but I would rather err on the side of caution and rely on the guys that actually designed the sites.
Yes, right.
John Kovach, I've worked with him for 20 years, and he's been, he's the man in northern Ohio, so, I rely on him.
You can actually present that to them, that we would like to see something. I want to see coverage map to the south, where your tower is, and like, so I can see where the gap's going to be.
Yeah, AT&amp;D coverage map.
Yes, yes.
If we could, part of the tabling, if you can work with Andy to send my, and my colleague both, I'm sure, he, he wants to see that, too.
Right.
Is to whatever, all the questions you have, you know, A, B, C, D, E, F, give them all to us.
Okay.
And then, we'll have, you know, we can both prepare our responses, but also have information all at one time, instead of trying to piecemeal.
Okay. Okay, well, what do you gentlemen want to do?
I'll make a motion that we table.
All three items?
All three items.
I second.
Okay, Andrew?
Who seconded?
Jack did.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to table the conditional use, the site development plan review, and the variance. Dick?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
All right, motion carried, items are tabled.
Okay, well, we will reschedule a meeting. It will be no earlier than three weeks from now, because we need at least two weeks publication time, and I'll need some time to confer with the attorney, so, it'll probably be three or four weeks from now, but we'll work with you guys both and make sure that the data's workable for you guys.
Well, they may need some time, too, to get information.
Absolutely.
Unless we need a list of what we're looking for, we can tell them.
Yeah. Again, if any of you gentlemen have specific questions for the attorney, like I do, just get with Andy, and we'll make sure those questions get answered.
Okay.
You know, again, we won't necessarily discuss this outside the meeting, because it's not, you know, we're here for a public meeting, but if you have questions, if we need responses from the attorney, we can get that back to you. So you're aware of what they are, and then obviously, we would let the other gentleman know those same questions and answers, but, you know, we just, we don't want to really discuss as much outside the meeting, that's the purpose of the public meeting. So, but we will be able to provide those to Andrew, and he can direct.
Okay. And Andy will forward to us the questions that are being submitted?
I believe so, that's the way we'll handle it, yep.
And then you'll submit questions to both individuals here today?
Correct.
Is that fair for everyone?
Yes.